I'd like to call the Harrisburg Planning Commission to order at approximately six thirty-four. Commissioners, you received your minutes from June first. Are there any changes, additions, or additions? Is there a second? Move in a second for approval of the minutes as they are. All those who favor state by saying aye. Those abstentions, motion carries. Under the first item of business, new business. This is a variance for nine sixteen South Eighteenth Street. It's a general virtual general. Followed by Henry Corblak. Nine sixteen LLC. This is instructed and they put fence which requires a variance for exceeding allowable.
So the request to install an eight-foot fence requires a variance because in the commercial general zoning district, the maximum fence height permitted is six feet. So at this property at nine sixteen South Eighteenth Street is a one point zero eight acre lot with the following structures. A one-story, eight thousand one hundred and sixty square foot brick structure was constructed nineteen sixty-nine. A one-story, six hundred and fourteen square foot masonry structure, which was constructed circa nineteen twenty-five. A one-story, three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five square foot CMU block structure, which was constructed circa nineteen fifty. A one-story, nine hundred and sixty square foot CMU block structure, which was constructed nineteen fifty. The property is bounded by Manada Street to north, South Eighteenth Street to the east, Lance Alley to the south, and the property at eight thirty-one South Seventeenth Street to the west. So the Planning Bureau staff recommend the request be approved with the following conditions. A condition one, the applicant shall include an elevation of a fence with the required building permit application, demonstrate there is no barbed wire proposed for the top of the fence, and confirming slats we place on the inside of the fence. Condition two, the applicant shall provide a plant screening to the exterior of the proposed fencing to provide a buffer between the adjacent residential homes and the commercial uses on site and the soon-to-be expanded IAD three right-of-way. The planning bureau recommends the applicant use evergreen species in order for the plant buffer to be effective around. The Planning Bureau recommends their request be approved for the following reason. The proposed fence will not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood or impair the use of the adjacent parcels. Reason two, the additional fence height will increase the effectiveness of creating a buffer, given the property is uniquely placed between residential dwelling units and the eventual IAD three expansion of right-of-way and the auto-oriented commercial uses on which are located on the project's site. Additionally, I'd like to note that the applicant that was on your desk, you guys came in. They informed me today that they wish to do the fence on the northern perimeter of the fence, which was not part of the application. So it's the yellow area on that document. So the first condition would only apply for the actual southern portion of the property towards those residential dwelling units. The applicant can explain further why they have made this change to the original submission.
Thank you, Stan. Did you state your name, address, and your relationship to the project? Sure, Henry Cornblak, nine sixteen South Eighteenth Street. I bought the property at the end of March. I'm the owner. You heard the staff report.
The only issue would be the privacy fence will not be slats. They're gonna be, it's gonna be a synthetic material with grommets. That's a minor issue.
I think as long as it's not barbed wire.
It's not barbed wire, correct.
Yeah, and part of that condition too is the actual fence post. It's just a requirement from the zoning code. They need to be on the inside of the property. So that's part of that condition as well, just to be in conformance with our code for our fence regulations.
I know you mentioned in the report. I was wondering how the eighty-one gonna affect his property at all?
Though, to my knowledge, this property won't physically be affected, but the property to the north, the building is actually getting demoed. So this property will actually be a budding IAD three right-of-way once it's expanded. Currently, it's not, but it will be.
Okay, you'll have a chance. You'll have a chance. We'll get to the public. Commissioners, those were my questions. If you have any questions, I'll start with Commissioner Reed. Then we'll go to the public. Were against this project. Please state your name and address. Start to my left. In the center. To my right. Yes, to my right. Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Could you, could you state your name and your address?
I think everybody needs a break.
Am I gonna go back? So are you for or against this project? Is there anyone else to my right, who are against this project? Commissioners? There a second? Move this second for approval of this project. All those who say aye. Those abstentions, motion carries. Good luck. Make sure you're healthier, cleaner, cleaner area. All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda. Okay. Item number two. They variance for seven hundred North Second Street. It's a zone commercial neighborhood filed by John Stat, Home Source Construction Group LLC. This is to establish a two-unit multi-family dwelling used on-site, which requires a variance for exceeding allowable density on-site.
So the applicant is proposing to do a multi-family dwelling. This request is actually just for exceeding the density requirements in the CN district. It's actually a buy-right use. So this property at seven oh nine North Second Street is a point zero five acre lot featuring an attached two and one and a half story structure with a total area of approximately sixteen hundred to twenty-one hundred square feet, which is an estimate. It was not included in the Dalton County tax records. This is an estimate for the square footage. And this was constructed circa eighteen eighty-six. The property is bounded by seven eleven North Second Street to north, Prince Alley to the east, the property at seven oh seven North Second Street to south, and North Second Street to the west. So the Planning Bureau staff recommend their requests be approved with the following conditions. Condition one, any exterior alterations to the building will receive approval from the Historic Preservation Specialist, or if necessary, receive harbor approval of certificate of appropriateness or COA application. Condition two, the Codes Bureau will perform a thorough inspection of the interior of the building to ascertain whether the work which establishes the additional unit is done in compliance with the Building Code regulations. And if they do not, the applicant must submit the necessary building permits to have the entire structure brought into compliance. Condition three, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure that the account billings reflect the establishment of the proposed use on-site. The Planning Bureau recommend their quest be approved for the following reasons. The property has a confirmed history of existing as a registered and inspected two-unit multi-family dwelling for numerous, numerous years. So this was actually converted into a restaurant on the first floor later on, but that non-conforming use was abandoned essentially when it became a restaurant. So if this was approved, this would reestablish that formal legal non-conforming use. And then the second reason we recommend approval is the proposed multi-family use would actually have a lesser equal impact to surrounding community compared to the previous existing restaurant use that was established on-site.
Is the applicant present?
The applicant. They were informed of this meeting. Sorry for the spiel.
Yeah, I was like, maybe they'll come forward later. We'll, we'll table now if they come in before we end the meeting. Mission recommend that. Continue this to the next meeting. The move in second to continue this to the next final commission. Proposed bench and motion carries. Okay, item number three, this is a variance and special exception application for eighteen oh one Market Street. RM filed by Adrian Woodman, Builders, Builders Property Management. Establish a two-unit multi-family dwelling used on-site and request relief from off-street parking requirements. Our special section, request relief from the density regulation regulating the property which requires to be there.
Make sure the applicant's present before I present, yeah. Yep, thanks. So this request is for to do a multi-family dwelling use on-site, which this actual request necessitates a variance for the relief from the density regulations, a special exception for the multi-family dwelling use and relief from the off-street parking requirements. So this property at eighteen oh one Market Street is a point zero two acre lot featuring a two and a half, one, two and a half, one-story, two thousand three hundred and ten square foot brick masonry structure, which was constructed circa nineteen oh eight. The property is bounded by Market Street to north, the property at eighteen oh three Market Street to the east, the property at one South Eighteenth Street to the south, and South Eighteenth Street to the west. So this property actually has a barber shop on the first floor, and it's that commercial space that is being proposed to be converted into one additional unit in addition to the other unit that's on top of that commercial unit. So the Planning Bureau staff recommend this request be approved with the following conditions. The Codes Bureau will perform a thorough inspection of the interior of the building to ascertain whether the work which establishes the additional unit is done in compliance with Building Code regulations. If they do not, the applicant must submit the necessary building permits to have the entire structure brought into compliance. A second condition, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure that the account billing reflects the establishment of the proposed use on-site. Planning Bureau staff recommend their request be approved for the following reasons. The property has a history of existing both as a mixed-use commercial structure and a two-unit multi-family dwelling. If approved, the project would reestablish a former non-conforming use within a structure that is configured to accommodate multiple units. Reason two, the proposed multi-family use would have a lesser equal impact to the surrounding community compared to the existing legally non-conforming personal service use.
Thank you, Stan. Could you state your name, your address, and your relationship to the project?
Property. You said the relationship to the new construction. That, was that your question?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Okay, I'm sorry. So my name is Adrian Woodman. I'm the owner of the building. There was a barber shop when I bought the property. It was a little bit, little bit too much to handle the traffic and stuff that was going on. So basically, I have it vacant because of the impact it had on the neighborhood. So I'm just looking to change it into a two-bedroom apartment instead of being a barber shop, so. Hoping to get proof for that.
The staff, there was two conditions. Both of you are and. Public Works to ensure that the account billing reflects the establishment of the proposed use on-site. Are you acceptable in this position?
Yes.
Did you want to add anything to the board?
No, I'll do whatever the apartments are to bring it to.
Commissioners, questions I have.
I have no question. It's sensitive and then parking. Problems and so I'll be. What's your suggestions?
Commissioner Reed?
I don't have any questions. I agree. I'm not a citizen.
I'll go through the public who are against this project. Anyone in the center?
Oceans, rubes, and districts.
Is there a second? Been moved in a second for approval of this project. All those who say aye. Those abstentions. Good luck. We're on item number three. I mean, sorry, item number four. This is a special exception application for twenty-three oh seven Berry Hill Street. It's in RM filed by Rena White. With DNR venue, this is established and event venue. Which is a use not specifically prohibited requiring a special exception. Request relief from the off-street parking requirement.
As noted, this is a special exception as a event venue, which we define this as use specifically not prohibited in the zoning code. It's not defined. And so this requires a special exception per section seven dash three oh three point eleven, point eleven B of the zoning code and the request relief from the off-street parking requirements. Just a little background with the off-street parking requirements, since the use isn't specifically defined, there's no use to base the parking requirements on. So typically, in this circumstance, we compare the most similar use in terms of impact on parking kind of based on the proposal and business plan submitted. We consider this quite similar in impact for parking to a community center use, which requires one space for three hundred square feet of gross floor area and one space for each employee. So based on that, we look at this proposal as needing fourteen off-street parking spaces and having the applicant having approximately eight off-street parking spaces that meet the standards of the zoning code, as in like the size of the spaces and driveway widths, things like that. The request is for six off-street parking spaces. So this property at twenty-three oh seven Berry Hill Street is a point two-two acre lot featuring a semi-detached two thousand two hundred and sixty-two square foot one-brick masonry structure constructed circa nineteen forty-nine and a semi-detached one thousand six hundred and sixty-six square foot one-story brick should, brick-built structure constructed circa two thousand one. So the property is bounded by Berry Hill Street to north, Carper Street to the east, the property at five eleven South Twenty-third Street to the south, and South Twenty-third Street to the west. So the Planning Bureau staff recommend their request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will limit the even, limit the event evening hours of operations to nine PM to mitigate any adverse impacts that may be generated by the proposed use to surrounding residents. Condition two, no alcoholic beverages are to be permitted to rented events or gatherings either as a BYOB or through a licensed caterer to limit the space to family-oriented and professional venues appropriate within the primarily residential neighborhood. Condition three, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure that the account billings are updated to reflect the new use. Condition four, the applicant will coordinate with the city engineer to address all existing development that encroaches into the public right-of-way. So that last condition, essentially the parking lot, the previous owner or one of the previous owners actually paved over into the the public right-of-way along South Twenty-third Street. So that's definitely something, if approved, the applicant will need to coordinate with our city engineer to address. Actually, the parking lot, the stop signs almost in the parking lot, there's pavement around it. And it encourages about fifteen feet. And that, that goes into consideration for the number of parking spaces of what we consider as legal parking spaces. So the Planning Bureau staff recommend their request be approved for the following reasons. Reason one, impact from the proposed business, including traffic generation. On the use of on-street parking will be limited to the relatively early hours of operation. Reason three, the proposed use will be closely similar in impacts and character by buy-right uses such as a community center use, meeting the conditions of granting a special exception for a use not specifically prohibited. Reason three, the request will utilize a long commercially configured property in a manner that will have minimal impacts on the surrounding residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Stan. Could you state your name, address, and your relationship to the project?
My name is Renata White. My address is twenty thirty-eight Swatera Street, representing DNR and DNR venue at twenty-three oh seven Berry Hill. My husband and I are owners of the property. Name is Darrell Everett.
My name is Darrell Everett, the wife of Renata White, husband of Renata White.
I can. You've both heard the staff report, but the conditions are acceptable.
We are.
Do you want to add anything to the report?
We spoke in depth about the project and our intended use for it, so everything that was outlined as a requirement supported our business plan and our idea for how we wanted to use the space, so we don't have any issues or concerns with it.
Did you talk to the neighbors?
We did. We've actually had interest from a lot of the neighbors in using the space and tried to include them in it. We notified the neighbors two times actually because we thought we were gonna be heard in the previous meeting. So there was a revision sent which the documents were sent through the postal service notifying them of the meeting dates that they wanted to come to visit. But we've had interest supporting the project from at least seven neighbors who wanted to use the space for their own personal events due to COVID and the issues with being able to gather and limiting the amount of spaces. So there's been positive feedback in how we're trying to approach the community within the project, and we also live in the community. Our house is one block to the north.
Specifically, I understand you might come to be alcoholic. What type of meetings are you?
So for targeting mainly businesses that have lost their space or didn't have specific homes. So for church groups that wanted to have holiday parties and gatherings, women's groups, men's groups, book clubs, birthday parties for youth, baby showers, art shows. A lot of the things that we can focus on the daytime, like for community events and gatherings, just having a location and a space if we wanted to do community cleanups, different drives and things like that. We've been approached also for Girl Scouts, I participate with my daughter, but because there aren't many Girl Scout programs within the city limits of Harrisburg and have to travel without, it's also been proposed to use as a space for a local group, Girl Scout group.
I guess if you get too busy, you're gonna have to schedule appointments with people that are running together. Hopefully gets to that. Commissioners, all the questions I had to the point.
Yeah, I just raised your attention that there is a letter that you sent out to the neighbors. All the B S N's. That's really relevant. What's, what's voting been used for in the past?
So prior to us, when, when we purchased it, it was a sign business, so you would have commercial signs. It was like printing for commercial signs, and the warehouse was built, basically to support the repair and creation of those signs. And prior to that, the original existing structure was actually a bar.
The last applicant we had seeking to have an event center was a, it was guys for a BYOB. And after hours, confident that's not the case here. You got my support.
Just to respond to that, the request was specifically outlined for those times because we wanted to show there are enough event spaces that, that target the adult crowd and for alcohol and things like that. So trying to actually bring something different. There are other things in the area with those. So the hours were specifically to take into consideration the neighbors and eliminate having to have those conversations with people interested in events because if you tell them that their event has to end by eight PM and you have to be out by nine, you don't attract the same crowd.
That's all.
Commissioner Reed?
I don't really have any questions. I guess I do have. So it's eight parking spaces though?
Parking, the parking lot in reality could probably fit about twelve to fourteen cars, but it's eight that I can legally look at our zoning code and say, okay, it's not in a public right-of-way. It has at least nine-foot width in space. So looking at what the requirements are, there's eight that are legally existing. But in reality, there is a few more. But what we can count towards looking at the request for parking, we have to go with what's legally there.
It's not that, that, that wide for many cars are parked there on the side. So I do have concerns about parking situation just because even a kid's birthday party, eight to ten spaces, you know, just doesn't seem sufficient. And I see who's still gonna find parking just because that's what you do. If you're going to an event, you need some of your park. So that's the only concern that I have.
And just speaking to the applicant, I would encourage them for their events, this style of thing where everyone's showing up at once, to actually look into doing valet parking, not really marking the parking lot for this, but you know, just maybe coding it off, you know, coordinating with each event to potentially have people, you know, park back-to-back in that manner that could potentially help.
Please, please, you'll get your turn. You'll get your turn. Trying to keep this civil. Oh, following up the parking. I don't know if you know any lots nearby. Patiently get over, they'll put heaven on their eye. Just a point.
Well, we have the, I don't know what you identified. Well, we have um the, I don't know what you identify them as, like the parking stuff. So we've had the conversation. We originally went for this application for it. Um, we had some some gating and some things across it. So if we aren't able to allow it for as far as they actually paved and extended it for, there's the parking directly up along where the property is beyond the sidewalk that would be considered on the opposite side of the building, which I'm not sure where the alley, the intersection of the alley is, but there's um, there's no business, only our business on that side of it. And then there's um opportunities for it along there and then maybe down the street on the twenty-third hundred block. So we'll we'll continue to look for it. Like I said, we'll honor whatever the re- requirements are that are outlined.
I have right now. We'll go to the public. Danny, one to my left, we're against this project. In the center, please state your name and address.
This this is recorded, ma'am, so could you do a microphone?
Yeah, we.
It's being recorded, so.
You have to go to the mic.
So the people, so you can be heard, yeah.
No, no, there's a microphone here. Right there. There. State your name and address.
Hi, um, my name is Stella Tittle. And I live at five-eleven South Twenty-third Street and have lived there since nineteen sixty. So I'm very familiar with all of the area. And honestly, with entrepreneurs, I am so happy. My only concern is what you just was, which is the parking. You know, I was concerned also about security issues and noise because I can hear anything in the back, anything that comes outside of that building I can hear. That particular building has been there since, I think you said nineteen fifty, no, nineteen forty-nine. And my home was built in nineteen. So all of those, that whole community, it's Benton Street to Berry Hill and Twenty-third. So my only concern is when you have a building that has a number of people and it does go to the outline parking, you know, and it's. My biggest concern is that, that they miss out on something. Um, and the the thing that I've heard, a couple of things I heard within your application that gives me to make me feel that, which is there's no alcohol in there. And there was one of them, a limited number of people that will be in venue and kinds of danger of people. Um, because my biggest concern was anything like loud music I could always hear. Something back there, music I. So that's my concern. If we can mediate the parking in some way, I want these young people to be able to do something. It's called money, and I understand. I will do the best you can in the environment. So I'm going to say as long, this is what I'm going to say, as long as there is parking issue that comes, and that parking issue comes to where? Where would that go if somebody did have an issue? Because I have my own parking area and on Carper Street, no one really parks on Carper Street. And so I don't ever have an issue there. I don't know about the barber shop. And I don't know about the apartment building because there was a barber shop and an apartment building. So I don't know if they will ever have an issue, but if they do, I'm sure his partner, they would have that with the man they always would address it with them. And the barber shop, I'm sure would know who. So if we can just fix that part and maintain the premises, you know, in a way that, you know, is conducive for a nice building in that area, I, you know, I'm going to support any effort.
You have your chance to speak. You have your chance to speak, or we'll move on then. Want to say something? State your name and address. Come to the microphone.
Dan Pasatko, five thirty-two Benton Street, Harrisburg. Yes, Stella is my neighbor and uh my main concern uh for that whole area uh is it's always, it's trash. It's it's a really, really bad problem. I've been uh living there since nineteen ninety-eight. And uh I've been picking up trash for twenty-some years. And you go out and pick it up and the next day or two, it's already back there. Uh, actually, I think Harrisburg needs to really do something about the trash issue. Uh, Wanda Williams, when she was campaigning, uh came to my door and I said, Wanda, what are we going to do about the terrible trash problem that we have in Harrisburg? And she said, well, I don't know, maybe fines or something like that. But uh I I I don't read about anything happening. Uh, it's, a lot of people complain about it. It it's an eyesore everywhere. And um so as long as these people maintain the property, you know, believe and don't throw their trash around, I'm good. Is that me? That was coming from, I'm not used to speaking in a microphone. Anyhow, that's my uh statement. Thank you.
What else?
Sorry about that. I didn't know.
Commissioners. I, you know, I I agree with my soul. I think this is a great project. One of the things officials always concern, especially with B Y O U or any nightclubs, very strict on that. You'll have to do a lot of things through the officials. Doing a B Y O U. Definitely against them, their news, noise and types of people like this. So when we, I'm sure when we read read this, you're doing this for youth and the community and churches ideal. Commissioner Green says, if we can solve the parking problem, that'll be great. We we do like your project. Is there a second? Been moved to second for approval of this project with the conditions, although it's a favorite state by saying aye. Those. Thank you. Very. Good luck. Be nice, talk to your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda. This is a variance application for ten seventeen McClay Street. It's known I N D. Bowled by Chuck Farrell with P E G Commercial LLC. And it's established and placed worship use on site.
So the applicant proposing to do a place of worship use and per section seven dash five point seven of the zoning code, a variance approval is required for the proposed use in the industrial zoning district. Uh, so the property at ten seventeen McClay Street is a three-point zero eight acre lot featuring a two-story seventy-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-four square foot brick masonry structure, which was constructed circa nineteen forty. The property is bounded by McClay Street to north, Julia Street to the east, the property at nineteen hundred Julia Street to the south and the property at one thousand one McClay Street to the west. So the planning bureau recommends their quest be approved with the following conditions. Condition one, the applicant shall coordinate with the office of the city engineer, determine signage and other traffic mitigation methods to address traffic flow and any potential spillover into the adjacent public rightways. Condition two, the applicant shall coordinate with the city's floodplain administrator to remove the unpermitted block wall located entirely within the Paxton Creek floodway at the rear of the property, bringing the site into conformance with FEMA regulations. Condition three, the applicant will provide a dedicated pedestrian space of at least four feet in width within the western all-street parking area to remove potential conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles. Condition four, the applicant shall remove the marked on-street parking spaces along the public right-of-way of Julia Street to distinguish available on-street parking as public and to encourage parishioners to use the available all-street parking provided on project site. Condition five, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure that the account billing reflects the establishment of the proposed use on-site. The planning bureau staff recommend their request be approved for the following reasons. Reason one, the proposed use would reactivate and adaptively reuse a long vacant portion of the structure within a highly visible location across from the P O P A farm show complex. Reason two, the subject property demonstrates various forms of physical hardship that contribute to challenges to redevelop the property within strict conformity of the zoning code. Reason three, approval of the proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, given that the property is adjacent to commercial and institutional uses and the project site would be able to accommodate the additional off-street parking demand.
Thank you, sir. Could you state your name and address in relationship to the project?
Sure. My name is Charlie Courtney. I'm with McNeese, uh, one hundred Pine Street, Harrisburg with me or Chuck in the.
Farrell, Chuck, Chuck Farrell. F A R R B L L thirteen.
Be part of it or? He's the boss. Uh, of both you, all three, you heard the staff report and the conditions are acceptable of this.
Those conditions are acceptable.
Do you want to add anything?
Not unless you want to hear something.
No.
I mean, I brought stuff, but I I know when to shut up.
You have pictures. You like pictures, so you want to present that or? Behind you there?
Sure, sure. I I mean, the only thing I wanted to show was, right, so this building's been uh in various stages of vacancy for a long time. Um, and 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 so when I looked at, when you look at this site, right, it's it's, the building has really two characters. This front portion of the site is about ninety-seven hundred square feet. It's two stories. Um, some of the images that we have here, right, it's it's mostly a like a a glass facade. So that front portion of the building, two stories, has more of a commercial or institutional type character. Uh, the back portion of the site um is one-story and it's uh has more of a warehousing industrial type character. It's got loading docks on all, all three sides. Um, so it's really a building that has kind of a a dual character, uh, which what we're proposing is for the church to um occupy, this is Clay Street, so this is that front two-story portion, occupy that, uh, all of that square footage, uh, the first floor be sanctuary and bathrooms. The second floor would be offices, um, for, I think they have a staff of three. There's a congregation. It's Winter's Chapel, uh, International Harrisburg Church. Um, they're looking to relocate here. They want to stay in the city. And um they've got a congregation of about a hundred and ten. They'd like to grow to two hundred. Um, so the first floor would be the sanctuary and some bathrooms. The second floor in this two-story portion would be offices and choir room. Then there's a about a sixty-seven hundred square foot portion behind that's in this one-story warehouse portion that they would use as a kitchen. Twenty-seven hundred, okay, twenty-seven hundred. Uh, and and that would be used for kitchen and storage. The only other thing I would add, it's kind of neat how this all kind of comes together. But this, if you can see it right here, this gray area is the industrial district. Uh, this is McClay Street and here is the the building. But this area kind of transitions across the streets institutional district. That's the farm show. Um, you've got some institutional to to the uh to the east. You've got open space, recreation to the east. This is Susquehanna Township, which you can see is conservation, some commercial highway up in here. But this this, the building itself is kind of at a at a crossroads of um of of use as it transitions from kind of more purely industrial to institutional. Um, even from an actual use standpoint, you've got retail to the to the west. You've got office and automotive or truck repair shop immediately to the east and you've got a Burger King. So the building, the design of the building, warehousing on this portion and more commercial or institutional on the front portion, it really serves that transition well. So we think that's an ideal use for that front portion, which um you haven't had a tenant in that portion for, you know, ever. Bought it, but even before that, it's been more than a decade.
I I just go by it with a weekend, so I jump that up.
And we've three permits, we. Pillars up and lights up and getting the roof done and just just trying to fix up the the building nineteen thirty something and it needed a lot of love, needs a lot of love. Thank you.
I guess this is more a question to the staff. I guess my my only concern is, I I think the great project and fixing the building, especially with the church. I guess the concern I have, the traffic coming down Clay Street. You know, like if you have hundreds of people. I mean, in that way, in, you know, it lies down.
Yeah, I um, from a professional standpoint, that was the primary concern with this application, particularly because a church use, everyone shows up at once, everyone leaves at once. Um, so I did reach out to Dowood Engineers to kind of see if they had any initial concerns. Um, they they didn't state um anything about concerns with the traffic flow other than potentially improving it with signage. Um, additionally, um, something that would mitigate this as well, um, there is an egress from uh on Julia Street from the rear parking lot. Um, so that could potentially kind of reduce, you know, people just exiting out of McClay. Um, like there is another option other than that one section of McClay. Um, so part of that condition one um will be, you know, if they do get final approval, I will actually have the applicants reach out to Dowood or have this discussion with them um to make sure that they kind of satisfy any of the requirements or if they have any concerns, um particularly um at the intersection of McClay um and Cameron Streets. I do know that that is currently getting some improvements um and on getting ready to start construction there on some of these improvements. I don't know the timeline off the top of my head, but the applicants will have to coordinate uh with Dowood to make sure that none of those flow issues conflict.
And sort of what the applicants um I know during farm show time of the year, even the builder show and the horse show there. The other property owners use parking lots, a lot of that property there, you know, you guys. Now, are you intending to rent those out at that time or? I don't know if they can do that, I guess. That's legal or maybe I'm going beyond what I should be asking.
It would have to be registered under the city code and there'd be a, there's a parking tax for each vehicle parked. Um, that issue comes up every year at Farm Show at various locations.
And I would know also under condition four, actually, not these owners, our previous owner actually on the public right-of-way on Julia Street where there is painting that kind of looks like it's distinguished for this property, they are actually renting out um the spaces in the public right-of-way um for their own financial gains. That's part of condition four is if.
I was questioning whether, hey, did you guys own that?
They did not. We checked that.
Uh, commissioners, any thoughts, concerns, questions? Commissioner O'Toole.
I have other questions.
Mr. Reed.
Wants to do choir and they're very, uh, they're they're great people. They they in-city, they're, every single one of them are just awesome.
They, they in-city, they're, every single one of them are just awesome. And they're very active, and they're all very professional. The, the chief spokesman is Dorothy, and she's a doctor at Harrisburg Hospital, and she's amazing, and her pastor, and and all the people I've worked with in that church are just, are just great. They, they love the Lord, and and they're very anxious to get into the space and teach, and they have a lot of kids, and they're great. So I, I'm not sure what they want to, what all they're going to do with it, but they're, they're, they're very happy with the prospect of moving in.
Anyone from the public who are against this project? Oh, no. Favorite person?
It's all right, it's all right, just stay quiet over here, no questions for me.
Is there any, uh, anyone who are against this project to my left? Is there anyone in the center? No one has to write. Take commissioners, like, or a project, a very good project, I get them. There are second. Move a second for approval of this project, with the decision, all those are favorite states by saying hi. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, we're on item number six. This is the variance and special exception application. For twenty-nine North Second Street, downtown center. Followed by Stephen Dettwiler with Capital City Venue. Establishing nightclub, the dance hall use and request relief from the aspects to the specific criteria for the proposal use.
So the applicant's proposing to establish a night hall dance call, excuse me, nightclub, dance hall use in the downtown center zoning district. And per section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code, a special exception approval is required for the use. Also, a variance is required due to the specific criteria of section seven dash three oh nine point two of the zoning code for being within five hundred feet of residential dwelling units. So this, this application was originally submitted as an event venue space, kind of going off that earlier application of a use not specifically prohibited. After reviewing the applicant's proposal with their business plan and having some preliminary meetings with the applicant, what is described most closely aligns with the nightclub dance hall use. So that's why this specific application is requesting that for the special exception and the exception from the specific criteria. So the property at twenty-nine North Second Street is a point zero six acre lot with a three-story, six thousand seventy-nine square foot nationary structure, which was constructed circa nineteen hundred. The property is bounded by the properties at two oh seven and two eleven Walnut Street to the north, seventeen North Second Street to the east, seventeen North Second Street to the south, and North Second Street to the west. The Plan Bureau staff recommend the request be approved with the following conditions. Condition one, all alcohols on-site require the issuance of a liquor license granted from the PLCB in which the applicant or hired catered services must conform to all applicable rules and restrictions associated with such license. Condition two, off-premise alcohol, including BYOB activities, shall not be permitted on-site without the authorization of a BYOB permit from the city and approval of a BYOB club use from the zoning hearing board. Any unauthorized alcohol sales or BYOB activities, either directly or indirectly by the applicant, will result in the immediate revocation of any mercantile license associated with unauthorized activities. Condition three, the applicant shall submit a sidewalk use permit for any proposed seating or other uses that may occupy the public sidewalk. Condition four, the applicant must conform to the provisions of chapter three dash three four three of the city code, and this relates to the noise and abatement. So Plan Bureau staff recommends approval for the following reasons. The proposed night hall, excuse me, nightclub or dance hall use would be compatible with the surrounding community, which features a high concentration of bars and restaurants that operate during late hours. Reason three, impacts on the community would be mitigated particularly in comparison to other nearby bar and restaurant uses through compliance with the PLCB off-premise catering permit regulations, which restrict the frequency and hours of operation for catering functions, serving alcohol. Reason three, the applicant intends to host only private events that are not open to the general public, which would likely address some security concerns related to the proposed use. Just to reiterate on some of these reasons, we recommend approval. The applicant did indicate in their proposal that for alcohol, that they intend to have caters hired at this space. So that's part of, you know, if they proceed with that plan, looking at the restrictions on their liquor control board for, which essentially called an off-premise liquor license. We believe that would mitigate a lot of, you know, some of these concerns, and also that the applicant is not proposing to do the BYOB use with some of the other issues that we've had in the city with these particular events where it looks like people try to circumnavigate having a traditional liquor license at the location. So some of that was in our assessment of why we're recommending approval. If the applicant is agreeing to the conditions, if the applicant were not to agree to some of these conditions, particularly one and two, that recommendation of approval would differ.
Could you state your name and address, in your relationship to the project?
My name is Stephen Dettwiler. I am not the owner of the building, but I'm the tenant. I'm looking to bring this plan to act. Play, basically because in a city, there's a lot of public use, a lot of people that are out of staters that are causing some of these problems in the city, at bars and stuff like that. So what I'm looking forward to do is more of a private membership-only activity, so that everyone's identified as, you know, a someone as in like a chair, there's like a two hundred members, everyone knows each other. It's more like a no violence type of thing, because you know who they are and stuff like that, it's kind of in the circle instead of in the public, where, you know, a lot of the altercations and stuff happen because people don't know each other and problems that arise in the streets, that, you know, come to, you know, where you alcohol, use alcohol. A lot of problems occur when it's public use. We're just looking to basically get a membership card, be able to come on the weekends, have a kid or somebody with a liquor license, so that they can do the proper proportions for the drinks, so that they aren't, you know, one person is drinking an entire bottle and getting, you know, out of hand. It's more of a controlled act, so that they can be, you know, waved off or red flagged, stuff like that within the community of the membership. It would be like every month, membership fee that you would pay, and you, there's like a metal detector that we want to walk through every time, and our security promised him that we would be on check, and we would make sure that we kept it safe. And I also wanted to do some things with the community as well, with like stop the violence and doing private events to allow people to rent out the actual building, to do functions, weddings. I want to relate it with the city capital. That's why I want to call it Capital City Venue, because I want the people who get wed, like married at the state capital, I want them to be able to have like their wedding to rent it out and be able to, you know, do that type of thing. So it's more of a membership, non-needing BYOB, because we don't want, we want to regulate the liquor and stuff like that through, you know, the proper stuff, so that it's regulated. Because injuries and stuff like that happened with people, I know how BYOBs are, so we're just looking basically to get the approval for the nightclub for membership. We would have, you know, events, DJ events would be a specific DJ, specific advertising, and surely not, you know, the young folks or underages or something like that. So we're looking at doing a total build-up from this spot here. And then my next thing, I want to do a horseback riding at City Island. That would be cool for the city. So I kind of want to mix that in with this type of stuff, to get kind of the younger crew on it, you know, do some city paintballing and stuff like that. So this is kind of the first step of business for me, getting into the city, and this is how I plan on doing it.
Did you hear the staff report and the conditions, are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes, I am.
Um, and it sounds good, trying to do, but definitely have security. And this is only my recommendation. Try to have an age limit. Also only. It's, I, through the summer and everything else, it seems like youth are once posing a lot of these problems, like, I know they have nothing to do, but around alcohol, I just away from that. Really, especially since it's membership. Twenty-one and above, right? I think. Again, with alcohol, I know you're controlling the alcohol there, but I'm sure people will come from other bars. Very well. Liquor jokes, but the security is probably just. That's my- Commissioner?
Is this the, uh?
Yes.
I guess, I have nothing more to add, sir.
Commissioner?
I'm just curious. As for the community, yes, thanks.
So basically, it's going to be more of like a membership on the, on the nightclub dance hall type of side, but we also want to help the community, and I was speaking with some people that were upstairs on, you know, things that we can do to kind of use the building to utilize a advertising tool. Because I am going to be vacant Monday through Thursday during the daytime, and I'm a city person, I want to start getting in with the city. So if there's something that I can do for, you know, the city to allow for meetings and stuff like that during the week, while the, you know, city hall is open, stuff like that, that my doors basically would be open. That's kind of what I wanted to fulfill that on a contract stating, that, you know, open for events, marriages, private album release parties and stuff like that, that people want to have not open to, you know, strangers and stuff like that. So it would be more of a twenty-one and up, membership-only catering, alcohol, security is going to be, you know, my biggest priority, because I know, I know what one, you know, gunshot can do to your establishment. It could, it could take all your money. I've lost, you know, somebody, some people that mean a lot to me in the, in the city, so I've learned, you know, my lessons on watching and witnesses, witnessing things. And I just don't want to go down that route, or set people, see people around me go down that route. So if I could help the city by allowing, you know, my doors to be open Monday through Thursday during the daytime, morning time, whenever, to allow, able to allow, you know, stop the violence meetings, or, you know, different things that would allow them to, you know, it's right on Second Street, it's the first building that you come to, that's an establishment, that's really, you know, of Ron's establishments and stuff like that. People know where they are, that it's a really good look. And just to let you guys know, I'd be able to accept that if you wanted to utilize the space when, you know, whenever. Yes. I haven't gotten that far yet, so I have to speak with Denise about a little bit more. I was going to do a mentor, I'm looking in, working with the CDL company to mentor and help people get their CDL license. I want to do that during the week as well, but it's a little bit more, you know, difficult than I thought to start, but I wanted to also put that on application, because it is something that we will be jumping into probably next year. Is I want to start that up on the second floor during the week. I want to do like a, help the unfortunate get a job, or, you know, they need a dishwasher down the street, anything within like a five-mile radius, they can come and get a daily job, and they'll pay them by the day. I want to get into all that stuff, but I'm a young entrepreneur, and I'm just now learning business, so I'm trying to get my foot in the door and not take too much of the bite off. Yeah, very.
Thank you. No, I really don't have, I don't have any questions.
Anyone from the public who are against?
If you want me to go to the microphone, I can just speak here.
Well, you better, it's been recorded. Thank you.
I'm Camionka, I have several businesses down here on Second Street. I'm definitely for use of that building. I know personally, nice kid. Here are my concerns. By using the off-premise catering license, it'll be somebody else's license. It doesn't regulate when you would have to close, it regulates when the outside company. It's basically a work. A lot of places until you're doing it, they don't want to go to the level of getting a liquor license. I would say just get a liquor license, and then you are on the road financially, or whatever you do. The other thing with the membership is, that doesn't regulate how many guests you can bring. Even if you're not a member, I bring four people with me. It basically, it's a work. Your controls. My biggest concern is that from a safety standpoint, we are teetering on the edge. It's a little dicey down here. We're working very hard to keep control of it. I pay for the police details, but unfortunately can't get enough police to sign up for the detail. So if it was a fully licensed liquor license, I would encourage it, because then the liquor control board has the absolute control to come in and fix a problem, make you fix it, or shut it down. This is kind of circumventing the system and, and saying, we're going to use somebody else's license, so they're responsible, we're not responsible. We can, they can serve drinks there, but we can stay open as long as they want, because if they happen to leave a couple bottles there, and stay until four or five in the morning, and it, it seems to me, it's just reminiscent of this hookah bar problem we're having all over the city, and the city alone has unfortunately, because of lack of regulations, they can't get control of it for a long time. If you look at, you know, the, the one that was on Walnut Street, the one on Fourth Street, one on Seventh Street, and now we're having a problem with Nigrees, where they just lost their BYOB, but they're still having partners, you know, still serving BYOB. I just think, it seems disingenuous, because I was before you a couple months ago, asking for the exact same exemption. I think the difference is, is that I have a liquor license, and I'm accountable to that, and I've got my money on the line, that I could lose that license here. There is not those checks and balances. I think he's a good kid. I would love to see the building in use. Just don't need more issues to pull further the amount of customers we have coming downtown. So I, I would say that the way it is presented, I'm definitely against it. But get a liquor license, do the right thing, I would be all for it. Thank you.
Do you have any, but?
I, I do, because I get emails with twenty-four people, I'm at a time almost every single day about the hookah lounges, the illegal speakeasies, the clubs, that are moving targets, you know, the one that was on Seventh Street, just I got word today from the sheriff, they moved to a different location, the city inside a garage. You know, I would, I would tell the applicant, we've gotten better at shutting them down, and if there's a cover chart to the door, you won't be open the next day. We're going to have the, we pulled the electricity out of one building, and we will cite you, we will cite you for everything there is. And that's what we've had to do. We've had to come very heavy-handed in a city that's usually pretty laid-back and cooperative with anyone who's trying to operate a business. We have video of security with body armor now, carrying AK seven forty-seven. Um we have video of security with body armor now carrying AK seven forty-seven guns. As security in what some of our places now. And so I don't know who your, the expected customers are if that's the security for people coming in. So a- and this has nothing to do with you because I don't know you, but, but these are the concerns we have. Um you know, we, we've had people, we have felons who are serving as security guards that are armed in Nirees is the information we have. I mean, it's a very real concern for public safety. Um and so, you know, i- i- if it is as you say it is. It, it, you know, and it's members only and it's not groups wandering in and out as they would. And it's not people paying at the door. If my membership is because I showed up tonight and gave you twenty dollars, we will shut you down. You know, I mean, that's the reality of it and uh. Um and, and there's a lot of people in various state agencies, the DA's office, our office, the sheriff's office. All taking a lot of time away from other things because of these clubs. So um, you know, I, I encourage young people to have businesses and do, do well. I, I, I just, the atmosphere of some of these clubs is becoming very, very dangerous for a lot of people. And the weapons are getting bigger um and they're, they're, they're a danger to the public, they're a danger to our law enforcement. Uh and, and it's a real concern in the city right now. So this would be an experiment that would have a very uh. Clear eye on it. And I believe you, this application and this project started. With the gentleman who had the club on Fourth Street and it's just transferred over. So I don't know what their involvement is in this particular. Ongoing application. If they're a partner in a business, I don't know that. But that gentleman ignored everything we've ever did until. He was going to get charged with a felony before it got shut down. Um so uh he ignored everything up to then. Um so that, those are the concerns of the city. It's just, I, I, and again, I don't know you at all. I've never met you. But it's a real issue uh and we will come at it very hard.
Basically, I understand the guy you're talking about. Uh he, he basically gave me. Uh the ultimatum to buy him out because of the city not liking him. Um my landlord, Michael. Uh had a lease with him uh before and they terminated the lease. He's actually taken him to court for ninety thousand dollars for damages. That I had to fix inside of the building um that, you know, started to become problems, you know, with the roof sticking and stuff like that that we had to. Take control of before this hearing because of, you know, things that would go wrong um with the coating, but uh.
I will note, Michael Lamb is a known and pretty solid property owner and landlord. He has a lot of commercial spaces in the city. And he's, and he's, he, he, I, I think the best thing to say about him is unknown, which tells you. He, he, he's not someone whose properties are always in, you know, being dragged in for, for non-compliance. So um he's, he's fairly well respected.
And uh basically, uh he's given me this uh opportunity to uh bring something better. Cause like uh you guys are stating about the problems that these BYOBs are having and stuff like that. And a lot of it is because one person is allowed to get their hands. On an entire bottle of liquor for three hour, like three hour measure of time. And it allows them to act out or make others act out. Uh with the membership, we want to do is, we want it to be that um. It's only allowed to be the people that are um members. Uh they're already, their name, number, all that is already on paper. Uh we know who they are. When they come in, we scan their card. Uh it's not like a in and out publicly thing like a guy sending guys from Florida or. Some, some dudes from this hood or that hood. It's more of a keep that kind of city violence out. Uh that's why I put the stop the bu- uh stop the violence banner uh above the property now uh to kind of um. Let everyone know what kind of peace, like peaceful environment we want to have. Uh I want to do something inside with like um more laid back for the females. Uh like neon lights lit, lighting up on their walls and stuff like that, like uh walls with the grit, the fake grass going down the wall. Uh more for the ladies type of thing to kind of say that they're a member of it and they can go there and start their night, their night out or end their night safely. Uh knowing that, you know, the security is where it needs to be at, that uh they aren't getting, you know. Somebody that's next to them to make them drink five shots in five minutes. Uh so easy, uh very sensitive red flag. Uh red flagging um policy that we're going to have. And uh we want to help the community during the week, like I said, by connecting things like. Um horseback riding at City Island and like paintballing in the city, stuff like that to kind of angle. Uh different measures that we have to uh grasp that we're losing the hold of because of things like violence and shootings, fighting and. It is the young. Just the other day, there was a fireworks and we couldn't enjoy them because there was a fistfight right before happening and someone drew a gun. You know what I mean? So stuff like that, uh being able to have the walk through metal detectors and stuff like that to become more of a family. Um thing instead of like a public thing. Iran uh over at Bourbon and stuff, you know, that's more of a public thing. People can come in there, come in and out. I could be from Philly or anywhere and come in there, have a drink and leave. But uh mine, you'd have, you can't pay at the door. You would have to pay on, on a membership, which you would come in and you would do it through the club. Uh you'd pay the, you know, let's say it's a hundred bucks, but all your drinks and all your food, your sidewalk restaurant. Um. You know, we want to do like a Caribbean jerk, uh shish kebab, kind of thing like Aruga has, um where it's, everything's free. It comes with the membership. So as long as you're a member and you're in control uh of the situation, that's all you have to do. Um and then you still be able to, you know, go next door and, you know, supply with. Um you know, your funds and stuff like that. I want you to be able to leave your wallet at home except for your ID. Uh and enjoy yourself. Um but there'd be more of a policy that's membership instead of public. No, it's saying as in like the um. The catering service, it's like a membership uh so that you'll be able to come in and you don't have to worry about bringing money out. Because it's the food and the drinks and stuff come with the membership. If you're a member, it's, I mean, it's, it's going to be advertised as unlimited, but it's not going to be, you bring your own bottle, stuff like that, the catering system. The catering uh service is going to be the ones that are um, you know, portioning it out. Um and I pay for them. The liquor, the liquor, the people, people in the catering company do. Yeah, no, yeah, it's under their liability insurance. Yeah, it's their insurance. Yeah, yeah, it's their, it's their, yeah, it's uh their insurance policy, basically. It's, instead of it being under my. Yeah, instead of it being under my insurance policy, it would be the licensed person that has the license. Uh the, from the liquor control board. It would be under their policy.
So, so are you saying if I become a member, I can come in every single night that month that you're open and I eat and drink? And I don't know about if I bring guests or not, uh for that one monthly fee.
Not, not like in top, like we just stick all you can drink. It's not all you can drink like.
I'm not really talking about. We have a lot of business in the city.
It's different, it's different.
Cause if it's a monthly fee, it would have to be a pretty high monthly fee in order to have basically the rights to come in and eat and drink as I pleased. Uh I'm just saying, that's the reality of economics and that's.
Yeah, as members, um when we are open, our doors are open on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Uh you know, the member, like times that we're open, if you had paid, say a hundred dollars for the membership. Uh we give you a membership and then you can come in and your entree, you get one entree for free and then like um. Their, you know, their rice or their uh fries is endless, uh never ending kind of thing. So it's kind of like I want to show people that they're special by allowing them to be able to host like all you could eat. All you can drink type of thing, but it'd be like you can not have to worry about overspending. Um.
I'd make a note to the board and the applicant. Um so for the off-premise liquor license, so for each license holder that um in the regulations. They're actually limited to fifty-two events per year for that license if you're off-premise. Um so just to the applicant to where, you know, there may be challenges in having, you know, a large number of different caterers since. They're limited to fifty-two events. Um so you would, you know, if you're planning to have three, four days a week. Um you know, you wouldn't be able to do that under the same caterer. Um so that might address some of the concern of having a continuous caterer there like. Four or five days a week. Um that wouldn't be allowed under uh the liquor control board rules.
Uh yes, it has, during the pandemic, it was pretty successful um in a establishment in Susquehanna. Um and he made pretty good money off of it. Um. But um basically, when it boils down, I understand it's a bad, it looks like it's bad. Um because it's a nightclub type of, you know, ordeal uh that it, it looks like, you know, with everything going on, but I promise with. You know, the approval that the membership, um you know, it, I understand what Jacob was saying about the fifty-two. Um fifty-two hosts of the catering. Um but these events um come from a, like a. Almost like a private event where you have to go in and you have to be on a list for that event. Um it's not like a public use. Um we have the parking from the city because we're on Second Street, you know, and it's in the evenings. And then uh during the daytime, we wanted to kind of focus on things for, towards the community and, you know, keeping it going to bring more people that also want peace. To our membership.
I, I could, yeah, yeah, it clearly looks like a way to circumvent the requirement, not the requirement, but assess it. I can't see any. That reason alone, we can't deny it. Wonder if we could add, we add a closing time to, to the uh, the conditions?
Good for, and for any use, anybody, so.
I was thinking two AM. I would need to be normal. I have no, I agree with, I was.
So I, I would, I would suggest the city has negotiated with the uh merchants association and Mr. Kamiaka can confirm, I believe, what it was. Because of, and this is nothing to do with you, with, with what happened is we had places closing at one. So that people could empty out. We had food stop being served at one so that there wasn't food available after the bars closed downtown and things like that. So there, that, that kind of arrangement is important in terms of maintaining safety when we have a lot of intoxicated young people. Coming out into the street at the end of the night. Um and we do have an association downtown that, you know, we would encourage you to participate with. Because at the end of the day, someone gets injured coming out of your place or on your premises, it's on you. It doesn't matter if you have a caterer or not. Um the uh, so I mean, but like the city has, has learned the hard lesson that you have to sort of have a negotiation. About these closing times and how they stagger up and down Second Street so that there really is less uh violence at the end of the night. Um you know, we, we've had people beating each other in the head at two fifteen in the morning with milk crates, you know, over someone flirting with their girlfriend. I mean, that's, you know, what happens when judgment's out the window. But, but we do it with both the people that serve liquor and the people that separately serve food. I mean, that's what we, we, it's, it's not just the people that have, you know, uh establishments for alcohol. It, the, it all matters in terms, in terms of the mix. What's that?
Or the um any use of this location, not just um like alcohol related event, just any event, um just to verify.
Yes.
So uh basically, we have to stop letting people in at one membership.
You have to start, you have to close your doors at one and people have to leave.
I made motion that.
Your respect. Moving a second to prove the project. All is in favor, state by saying higher.
Was that a three one?
Good luck. Thank you.
You know, I'd recommend to the applicant, um reach out. I believe you reached out to the chief of police, but I spoke with Deputy Chief Warrenson. Um and he mentioned to me that he'd be happy to talk to you as well while moving forward.
Next on the agenda is other business. If you have any.
Nothing to add, no. Um I would, um we did, uh, we actually got uh. We ha- selected a candidate for the planner one position in our department. Um so within the next month or so, we will actually have additional staff, so. Um maybe I'll be yawning last when I'm up here. Ooh, we need historic, we need higher historic preservationist, then maybe treats.
I see, we only got a half a bottle of water. Budget go down? You know, I, no, I hear some places actually.
Someplace as well?
Actually pay the commission. Anyway, any other, anything to consider the order? You just move me, I do the voices. I know the voices there.